Today is Tuesday, August 31st, and the time is nine o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. We have room full of guests. We'll move right along. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Moving on to unfinished business, may I have a motion to remove unfinished business from the table?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to remove unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. First, we have the award of bid number 21056.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before you this morning is the award of bid 21056, the Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility. We would like some more time to discuss this project with you and for continued due diligence. We'd like to retable this project for further consideration to the September 7th, 2021 Open Business Meeting.
And this is the one where we actually ended up going over budget with the add-ons. And we had one, only one company that actually could bid. Okay, that makes sense.
So we ended up just really one bidder.
Yeah, reevaluating, okay. I'm good with that. If you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, I'm ready for a motion. May I have a motion?
Sure, I'm going to move to table the award of bid 21056, Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility, to September 7th, 2021, for further consideration.
I'll second that.
You moved and seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And now, and now we have the award of bid number 21072.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid 21072. I would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Could you read the letter?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
It's a letter dated August 31st, 2021, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement, regarding bid 21072. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the bids submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 21072 to Upson Company as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of $116,500.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion. If you're ready.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I'll go ahead and move to accept the recommendation of the valuation committee and award bid 21072, Ada County Coroner's Section IB Roof Replacement, to 2021, to Upson Company in the amount of $116,500. And if you remember the last board meeting, OBM, you wanted to have staff take a look. We can just bid out all the roofs at once, and Legal weighed in and said, no, we cannot. So we're doing them independently, once a year.
Well, Legal says it, we have to do it.
We usually follow their advice.
Usually, that's a good idea. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
I will now open a public hearing on Resolution 2665. Is there any testimony? Resolution for sole source contract for quality assurance, software, and services related to Ada County Dispatch. Is there any public hearing? Any testimony?
I don't believe anybody's on board.
Doesn't look like it.
No.
All right, I'll now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the Board? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2665, listed on the agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll now open a public hearing on Resolution 2666. Resolution for the sale of personal property owned by Ada County. Auction number 19, auction 19, metal ballot boxes. Is there any testimony?
Mr. Chair, this may be confusing to folks. They're really not ballot boxes. They were labeled that. They were metal boxes on wheels that were used to transport ballots from cage to cage. They were never really considered ballot boxes, but that's what made it on there. So I hope no one is confused by that. We're not selling ballot boxes.
We're not going to sell any ballot boxes.
So they can set one up at their front yard?
All right, these are carts.
Yes, they are carts.
Okay, well, good enough. Is there any other testimony? I'll now close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the Board?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution number 2666, as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll now open a public hearing on Resolution 2667. Resolution adjusting Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue to the Ada County Sheriff's Office. Is there testimony?
Mr. Chair, for the record, I'll just go ahead and read in. This is a partnership between various departments and agencies. We have an award of $30,619 to Ada County from forfeitures and restitution. We have $3,670 coming from the State of Idaho Department of Transportation, from youth license plates revenues. Another $38,350 from the auction sale of the Sheriff's Office marine boats. And $6,556 from the Department of Parks and Recreation. And another $684 from federal forfeitures and restitution. Whereas combined, this will help us purchase the new boat. So it's a real partnership.
Good. Is there any other testimony? I'll now close the public hearing. Is there discussion amongst the Board? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2667, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll now open a public hearing on Resolution 2668. Resolution for sole source procurement of IT professional services for fiscal year 2022. Is there any testimony?
Bob?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is for IT services through CompNet for complex IT issues that sometimes arise where they need to be resolved very quickly.
Okay, is there any other testimony? Hearing none, I'll now close the public hearing. Is there discussion from the Board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution number 2668, as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're down to those public hearings. Next, we have proclamation designating the month of September 2021 as National Recovery Month. Commissioner Davidson, would you like to read the proclamation?
Sure.
Where's that little guy that was talking?
Do for me. All right, the Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation to designate the month of September 2021 as National Recovery Month. Whereas Ada County does affirm and acknowledge the harm and hardship caused by substance abuse and mental health. And whereas we recognize the purpose of Recovery Month as a salute to people who are in active recovery, active recovery from substance use disorder and mental health. And whereas we recognize those who are striving to get into recovery, that recovery is possible. And whereas we affirm that the people affected by substance use and mental health are our sons and daughters, our mothers and fathers, our brothers and sisters, and deserving of our love, compassion, and support. Now, therefore, the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 in Ada County as National Recovery Month.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think that this fits hand in glove with our ceremonial ribbon cutting today at the Transition Center. Over 70% greater, 70% of people who are incarcerated in Ada County jail have substance abuse and are mental illness or dual diagnosis issues. And we are really hoping to get folks out of the jails sooner and into transition centers to help them become productive citizens. And that, part of that is getting them substance abuse treatment, mental health counseling. And so we're going to be really excited about being able to open that center up fully and promote that today. So this is part of what the county is doing for Recovery Month. So I just wanted to mention that. It is at noon today, out at the Barrister Campus.
Yes, we're going to have a opening up. It's been opened briefly. Apparently, we need to have an education session with some of our judges so they can know that they can use that facility. And it is a good facility. We're happy about it. We're proud to be able to do it.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda and designate the month of September 2021 as National Recovery Month.
I will second that. You've heard the motion, moved and seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have now designated the month of September as National Recovery Month, and we wish everyone the best. It is in need of recovery. Okay, let's see. We have next on our agenda, we have licenses and transfers. We have one catering permit and one license transfer. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit and one license transfer, and authorize the Chair to sign documents on behalf of the Board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Bill's not here. Do you have any kind of report or anything for us?
Just happy to be here, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Through the budget process and all that, it's finally behind us. And we're now gearing up Auditor's Office with Kathleen and her crew for year end to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is.
Don't forget any of those Ts or Is.
So we're excited for that. Other than that, things are going smoothly in the quick talk.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, any updates on municipal elections coming up?
We're working through the designations on all the precincts. There's a lot of the boundaries that we're working into our system. There'll be some testing that'll be coming up to make sure that we got it right. But again, it's fun and exciting times when you're dealing with new boundaries for precincts. So they're working hard at it. We've had a couple of turnover folks in elections, some new hires and stuff. So we're getting those folks trained, and we're pretty confident with what's going on. I know Saul's on line two. Saul, do you have anything to add for the upcoming elections?
What I would add at this point, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is that we are done with the districting process for the city of Boise. As you likely know, we are now operating within districts there instead of at large. So that process is complete. I would like to thank the county IT and GIS team in helping us make that happen along with the city. We are in ballot construction mode at this point, so we're building our ballot for November. The filing deadlines are approaching us, so that will finalize our ballot, and then we'll be moving forward from there.
All right, good. Do we have the, we have the census data, right?
We do.
So census data has been released for the reapportionment committee. We do not have the reapportionment results at this point, so we actually can't start precinct redrawing at this point until a later date.
We can't do the precinct redraws until the redistricting committee has completed their work?
That is correct, because they need to take a look at the legislative districts that we'll be working with. Once they define those legislative districts for the state, we can then start the precinct work.
So we'll be doing that in November, then?
Probably, hopefully.
Hopefully, November. More than likely, December, Mr. Chair.
Well, of course, they'll get sued, and so it could delay it a little longer. One of the members of that commission indicated that Ada County might be, might just get nine legislative districts as opposed to 10, because of the way the numbers work out, without crossing county boundaries. Anyway, we'll move on with that. Thank you, Saul, thanks. Any other questions of?
No, thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Claims Journal, may I have a motion on the Claims Journal?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated August 31st, 2021.
I'll second that. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now, next up, our personnel actions. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions, as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We have our distinguished assessor with us. Tell us about your conference in Salmon. Anything else you might have for us?
I will start off with the conference. We talked about several issues that are really important to all of us, all of the counties, but two I'm just going to talk about this morning. The Homestead exemption, in fact, as you see here, we have about another 64 tax cancellations because of the way the Homestead exemption is being processed. This goes back to changing the deadline for filing the Homestead exemption from April 15th through the end of the year. It's really creating a lot of problems. We now have over 400 tax cancellations because of this, and no one ever imagined that at all. And I know that Senator Rice is certainly concerned about how this is, that change in law has impacted our work, and we're going to be working with him on that.
Who's that you'll be working with?
Rice.
Oh, Rice.
Senator Rice, yes.
Oh, okay.
And also, we're going to be working with him on some other projects. We, being assessors, I see on how we can add some predictability and stability to the property tax system. I'm looking forward to that. I think it's going to be very rewarding.
I spoke to him this week, and he said the Tax Commission misinterpreted the law. He said that the, these tax cancellations are supposed to be prorated. I don't know about how that, the law actually reads that way, but that's what, he said that's what the intent of the legislature is.
There are two points that really are not clear. The one that you just mentioned, I was talking with the Tax Commission. They're very firm that the way the Attorney General has read that law, it is not to be prorated. You did it for the entire year, so that needs to be resolved, and...
Well, that's Senator Rice's impression, is it's supposed to be prorated. He said the Tax Commission just has it wrong. They'll have to tweak it a little bit, I guess.
He feels very strongly about that, too.
I know he does.
Yeah, and the second problem that we're facing right now, and that is that when is the effective date of the Homestead exemption? It says upon, it is effective upon application. Senator Rice reads it that it is the date that you sign it going forward. So if you purchase the home, occupy the home...
Ergo de proration.
It would go as of July 1st. But the way the Tax Commission is reading this, it's upon, it's effective upon application. It's effective for the entire year. So that needs to be resolved, and our legal counsel has weighed in on this, and I've got to get in touch with him, and he can perhaps give us some guidance. So that's something that really we're struggling with, and it's created a lot of additional...
Yeah, we'll need to follow the Tax Commission's guidelines on this, I would imagine.
Mr. Chairman, yes. It's the first time I've gone against legal counsel's advice, and I'm going to side with the AG's office on that, because there is a problem. The AG's office would be who we would be fighting.
Well, if they have a problem with interpretation, that's what the legislature, they'll be meeting in January, and they can figure that out.
Yes. The second thing that we, another thing we talked about that's really important and has a lot of impact on us, is the Transportation Department is really pushing ahead with their centralization. In other words, they're going to be doing all motor vehicle transactions except walk-in transactions. We had met with them a couple of weeks ago, and they wanted to implement this over a period of 12 to 18 months. I and some of the assessors had expressed to the Transportation Department that our budgets are already set for this year, so we really can't make any changes. They came back, and we had a discussion up in Salmon, as how they're going to phase this in. It, for this fiscal year, starting '21 to '22 fiscal year, they're going to be doing the online admin, mailing admin, vendor title, and postage. They're going to reimburse us completely for this fiscal year. Even though we're not doing the work, we're going to get paid for that. So that makes our budget whole. The following year, FY '23...
Is that for our fiscal year or their fiscal year?
It's our fiscal year, yes. That's a good question. So FY '23, they will no longer pay the online admin fee. So any online transactions, we will not get the admin fee for that. We're sure to budget for that. We will still get the mail-in admin fee, vendor title, and the postage. That's FY '23. FY '24, starting in October '23, there will be no more reimbursement at all. We'll be on our own. To me, I see the only work that the assessors will be doing with motor vehicles will be walk-ins. So in other words, we'll say if you and I had a private transaction, I purchased a car from you, I would go to the assessor's office to get the title changed on that. Or if somebody just couldn't do it online, they would come into the assessor's office. So we're going to have to do some forecasting of what size of a staff we're going to need. Right now, we have five different points of distribution for the motor vehicle services. What, how's that going to change? Rather than have 18 to 24 months, we've got, we'll have 36 months to get that all figured out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Did they consult with you when establishing this schedule?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, they did. They, again, they talked to us about two weeks ago, and they said 12 to 18 months. And we all said, no, our budgets are set. We, based upon the way things have been in the past. And they then came back, and they're working with the Governor's Office on this. They came back.
Is this new schedule acceptable to you?
I'm sorry?
Is the new schedule acceptable to you?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, yes, it is. Yes, it'll work, and it gives us plenty of time to get everything worked out. In fact, we're already starting to implement this.
You can adjust your staffing and so forth, based on the new, based on that schedule.
Yes.
You wouldn't have to have as many points contact, would you?
We most likely would not. Rather than having the five, maybe two, maybe three, something, it's something we just need to figure out.
I would guess that's a very small number, just people who sell to other people as opposed to dealers.
We are starting to implement this right now. We have three positions that are open, and we've withdrawn, we've closed that. And we have four clerks at Shenden who really have run out of work to do. So rather than seeking other new employees for this, we're just going to be moving those people around. So that's how we're going to implement this. I've always, we knew this was coming. We didn't know when, but it's always been my position that we will, rather than laying people off, we will just through attrition over three years, I think we can, it'd be a very soft landing for all of us.
I remember you, I think this is right in line with what you were envisioning, because you said probably six months ago that you saw, hopefully, it would peak around October.
Yes.
And they would have everything in the system consolidated, but it looks like they've done it a little bit sooner, so...
Yes.
Sounds like they're right on track.
And I also just wanted to tell you about the wait times last week. We're back to our normal wait times, about six minutes wait time, four minutes. The range for the three of the officers, well, we have the cummatics, is four to eight minute wait times.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, thank you, Bob. Anything else?
I could go on forever, because it was a great, great meeting, but I know you can't, so I'm going to leave that, but at this point.
Okay, well, thanks. Thanks, glad you had a good...
Well, thanks, the, I think, you know, the department over there for making us whole, knowing that we're already into our budget, and it's too late for us to adjust, so send our appreciation.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Thanks again. All right, moving on to tax cancellations, which is really not tax cancellations. It's tax adjustment, but the code calls it tax cancellations.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll move to go ahead and approve the 64 tax cancellation slash adjustments, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents, cap the Board.
You have a second to the motion?
I will second that.
Move and second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. We have, motion carries. Treasurer's Office, we have a report from the Treasurer's Office. Beth's not here.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the Treasurer's Office does not have any updates today.
Okay, congratulations.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, we have approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next, we have Expo Idaho interim event agreements. Is there any discussion? We've got a quinceanera, a baptism, Treasure Valley Flea Market, Boise Christmas Show, and parking.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, go ahead.
I didn't have any discussion. I just wanted to point out that we concluded a very successful Western Idaho Fair. I wish Bob was here. I'm sure he's in recovery right now, our fair director, Bob Batista, but the statesman story that came out, I think accurately said that we broke all kinds of records on attendance and money, and talked to some of the vendors there, and they were just over the moon about how much money they were making, so... Happy to be done with that fair, though. It's a long nine days.
It was a very successful fair. I'm glad that we proceeded to have the fair. The article was in the, the Statesman, only dealt with concerts, because there was lots more besides the concerts, but the concerts were a record, concerts. The, all of them were records, and, but all, everything was way up. The attendance was way up, the food vendors made a lot of money, the ride concessions. Everything was way up. People in this valley were extremely happy to have a fair again, and so are we. So anyway...
Mr. Chair, go ahead and make the motion.
Okay.
We have to approve the five interim event agreements, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
We've been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two event agreements for Parks and Waterways. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the two Barber Park Education Event Center agreements, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is there anyone here for Parks and Waterways?
Uh, doesn't look like it.
I think I read that is today the last official day of the float season.
I, I don't know.
Is there emergency? No?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, I'm not sure.
Okay.
If it is or not.
I don't know. I know the water's getting a little lower, so it might be a little dangerous to float it after it gets too low. So I don't know.
I think the shuttle stopped today. I don't know what our official end is, but I think I read the shuttle stops today.
I know they've had a very successful season, season as well.
Oh, yeah.
It's a great benefit to the community. We now have on the agenda 52 agreements. Are there any questions about any of the agreements?
Mr. Chair?
These are renewal agreements, by the way, yes.
I'd like to pull a couple of these from the list to be, well, to get some additional information and to debate at another time. And those are... And those would be W, C.C., D.D., and I.I.
Could you?
Is there an explanation?
Could you, uh, tell us what they are and what you want to debate or talk about?
Uh, well, uh, W is an agreement between, um, Ada County and Sawyer for pest control. Just an area I have some personal knowledge of, so I'd like to look a little deeper into their services and their contract.
Which, which, which agreement is that? You say W?
Let's, uh, well, listed on the agenda is W, one, two, three, two, two, dash, four, dash, two, one.
Okay.
Uh, agreements, uh, let's see, listed on the agenda, C.C. and I.I. Are for, um, leasing space in this courthouse to Boise City and Garden City. And I wanted to review that to make sure that, uh, the space is not needed, uh, by our court before Boise City or Garden City gets that again. And on the agenda, D.D., uh, renewal of memorandum, understanding between Ada County and Garden City Police Department for polygraph examination services. That's just something I'd like to, uh, reveal a little closer as well.
So those are one, W, C.C., and D.D.?
I thought you said I.I.
And I.I. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to Commissioner Davidson to try to get to these earlier before OBM's because these are on timelines and we usually don't have a lot of time between when they expire and renewing the contract. And I think if you come to this meeting more prepared, we won't have to delay.
duly noted.
Do we have legal, like, legal team here, anyone, to know if these have dates that we need to pay attention to? Do we have at least a week to be able to, on these?
I do believe that we do because it does appear that they are all renewals for FY twenty-two.
Okay.
Yes.
I do believe that we are okay.
Okay.
I've reviewed all the, all these agreements and they, none of them start until the end, end of our, of our fiscal year. So I think we could, we could accommodate Commissioner Davidson.
If he wants to make the motion, I'll second it.
Make the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to, um, let's see, that would be, uh, I move to approve the agreements as listed on the agenda except for, uh, item number W, item C.C., item D.D., and item I.I. is listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
You need to have a date to table it.
Additional items shall be tabled to, uh, to the September seventh.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. Procurement. We have procurement with, uh, opening of two bids. Oh, Bob, you're back on the table.
I'm back again.
Oh, good. Um, we're going to opening of RFP two-one-zero-seven-four Ada County Courthouse Corridor Parking Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Robin has our bonfirey procurement system queued up. And if you're ready for us to open, we'll proceed with the opening of RFP two-one-zero-seven-four.
We're ready.
I'm sharing, but it's not.
It's up there.
Oh, it is, okay. Sorry, just delayed, okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, this morning, uh, um, we'll be opening, uh, three proposals, uh, before you and, uh, we're just looking for the name of the proposer and when Robin brings those up there, if you'd like, I can read them into the record. Okay? All right. So we have our, uh, three, uh, proposers that are up there. Uh, the first is Diamond Parking Services. Uh, second proposer is Republic Parking Northwest LLC, and the third proposer is The Car Park. So those are the, uh, um, proposals we'll be evaluating. Uh, our evaluation team will need a little time to evaluate these proposals and we request that this be tabled for award to the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one Open Business Meeting.
We're going to open the bids?
Uh, we're just, uh, um, it's, these are RFPs.
Oh, our proposals, sure.
So we're just, uh, reading the name of, uh, the posers.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
We're going to have a motion.
Mr. Chair, before the motion. Robin, why, um, we have Diamond Parking with a hundred and fifty-four page submission, Republic Thirty-Six. Why is there zero on Car Park?
Commissioner Kenyon, I'm not entirely sure.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that. Sometimes, uh, uh, Bonfire, uh, doesn't note all the pages there. And we sometimes will see a zero. They'll have their complete package there, but, uh, it won't count all the pages.
Like, did they just bid and not submit it?
So we'll, yeah, we'll have to dig into it, figure it out.
Okay.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll go ahead and move to table the final rankings and award recommendations of RFP two-one-zero-seven-four Ada County Courthouse Corridor Parking Services twenty-two to September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Well, second that. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Motion carries. Opening of RFP two-one, uh, zero-seven-five.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, our final opening today is, uh, the opening of RFP two-one-zero-seven-five, the re-proposal for Ada County Elections Absentee Ballot Printing and Mailing Services. And, uh, we received four, uh, responses for RFP two-one-zero-seven-five and Evan has our bonfire, uh, e-procurement system queued up. And if you'd like, Evan can go ahead and open.
Okay. I'd like.
All right.
Go ahead. You received four proposals. Who are they from?
Um, we're going to find out here in just a second. And, uh, once those, uh, come open, if you'd like, I can read them into the record.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, the four, uh, uh, proposers for this project are, the first is Integrated Voting Systems Incorporated. Second is K&amp;H Printers Lithographers Incorporated. The third is NPC Incorporated, and the fourth is Robus Elections Incorporated. Those are our four proposals we received. Uh, we will need a little time to evaluate these proposals and we would like to request that this be tabled for award to the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one Open Business Meeting.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, I move to table the final rankings and award of RFP twenty-one-zero-seven-five, re-proposal for Ada County Elections Absentee Ballot Printing and Mailing Services to September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Commissioners, appreciate it. All right.
Thank you.
Good morning. Today's Tuesday, August thirty-first. The time is ten-thirty-eight.
Nine-thirty-eight.
Oh, excuse me, nine-thirty-eight, you're right. Nine-thirty-eight. Excuse me, thank you. Nine-thirty-eight. All three commissioners are present. All of us are with us are Sean, our, uh, our director and IT guy. Okay. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
May I have a motion in the claims journal?
Well, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment on the claims as listed on the claims journal dated August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
We move and second it. All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Next, we have personnel actions. Do we have a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel action as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Uh, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Minutes are approved. Uh, we have Derek Rain with us to provide us an update.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Um, just a quick COVID update. Uh, we made it through the fair. Um, I think after all of the testing we did down there, uh, we only caught, uh, a couple of people that, that tested positive, so that was a good thing.
But once you're retesting the same people, you're going over?
Over and over. Yep. Um, the, uh, the COVID numbers overall are certainly on the rise. We're seeing that in our data. We've gone, just what was it, about a month ago, we were sitting around three patients a day. Now we're up, uh, around nine. Uh, the highest we saw back around December third of last year was, was ten. So we're nearing kind of that high that we saw in December of last year. Um, the hospitals have, have continued to utilize the rolling bypass where, uh, we can only take cer- certain emergencies to that hospital when they're on bypass. Got a little clarif- clarification yesterday on, um, some additional patients that we can bring in, what we call a code critical, that doesn't fit into stroke, trauma, heart attack, or cardiac arrest. Um, you know, there are other emergencies that we can take to those hospitals when it's critical.
So where are you taking them if they require?
To another hospital, yeah. Um, you know, if they, if they prefer, let's say St. Al's main campus and they're on bypass, then we'll, if they really want to go to a St. Al's facility, we can go to St. Al's Eagle or clear out to Garrity in Nampa.
Okay, so it's just the main hospital right now that's on bypass?
Well, it, it's been, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, it's been, um, different hospitals at different times. And that's one thing that we're working with the hospitals on right now to maybe, uh, instead of calling our supervisors, run it through dispatch so that at three o'clock in the morning, my supervisor isn't waking the entire hundred sixty-four people in the department up saying, hey, this hospital's on bypass now and, and putting something in dispatch so that they're aware, you know, I can only go to this hospital with certain patient types. But, um, it's, uh, it varies throughout the day. We'll usually see three to four hour blocks of time. But it, it occurs at multiple times a day. And a lot of it is just, uh, you know, the hospitals are, the ICUs are, are filling up. The hospitals have started utilizing some of their surgery nurses to, uh, open up additional ICU beds in the hospital. So they're doing everything they can to, to kind of mitigate what's, what's happening. Um, luck, luckily for us, we aren't seeing that wait time at the hospital yet. Um, we've seen a few instances where we waited maybe twenty minutes, but it's not the two to four, six hours that other communities are seeing. So, um, if that starts to happen, we'll have to, to change things. We did, um, and this isn't necessarily COVID related, but, uh, the months of May, June, and July were the busiest we have ever seen. Uh, we're, uh, if, if, if that trend continues, we'll be on track for a hundred called days every day, uh, and we've never seen that before. Last year, we ran just over thirty-two thousand calls and, and that would be thirty-six thousand five hundred if you ran a hundred a day.
Would part of that be because you include, because you, we're now contracted with CUNA?
CUNA will add a little bit, but they're only running, you know, two to three calls a day out there, so it's, uh, it's, I think most of it's just directly related to growth, um, and all the growth that we've seen out in the western county. And so, um, that's something that, that we're, we're in need of addressing, you know, but budgetary, um, restrictions keep me from adding ambulances. So, um, you know, we're, we're definitely pushing forward with that GMT project to be able to bring in some additional revenue, to be able to, you know, uh, adjust our people's pay and, uh, you know, add additional service out there in the field, so busy for sure.
You might want to check with Phil and Kathleen, Mr. Chair, to see if, um, if there is an emergency situation, if we can open the budget and actually, you know, increase. Um, it might be something that we have to look at if we're just, our wait times then, you know, are just
Yeah.
not, um, yeah, not applicable to.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, we've also, uh, started conversations with our access partners to see if we could pool resources to put additional units in the field if we start to see that kind of thing. Uh, luckily, the hospitals have agreed to use the private ambulance services if they need to transfer patients all kind of around the valley or the state and not use our services for that, which is a good thing because it keeps our services or our units in service here where we need them.
In emergencies, yeah.
But, uh, my, my people are definitely, uh, they definitely notice how busy we are. They're, they're, uh, they're working hard, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, um, the governor is, has announced and is going to, going to be announcing again today at noon, that we received federal funding, he requested federal funding to open three COVID-specific treatment centers outside the hospitals and get all the COVID patients out of the hospitals. So do you, do we know yet where those are going to be located and, and, and are you going to be given direct instructions that you will then, do you have to go to the hospital first and then they refer them, or are you going to be able to go just take people? You make the call that it's COVID-related and take them right there. How does that work?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, we have not yet heard on that, so, um, I'll be watching at twelve-thirty today to, to see what the governor says on that. We, uh, we've been, uh, in contact with, the state has a weekly call and then hospitals every morning. Uh, Camio Akins is on that call, um, just keeping a price of where the hospitals are at. So we're anxious to see what the plan is and, and how we will play a role in, in that plan.
Okay. It'll be interesting to see what, you know, what he has to say today and, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you keep track of how many calls might be considered frivolous or, you know?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, um, we do. Um, you know, one of the things that we're working with our law enforcement partners on right now is we have around six thousand of our calls a year for, for what are called a PD assist call where, um, we're called out to evaluate somebody that they have in custody. And most of those calls, we don't transport the patient. They end up going with the officer to, um, jail or, or, you know, released on scene or what have you. So, um, we're working with law enforcement to reduce the number of calls that they utilize us on because their, their preference is to have a, a medic unit, an ambulance come out because it's a smaller unit than a fire truck. Our preference is use the closest resource to go out and evaluate that patient, whether it's a fire truck or an ambulance instead of just calling for an ambulance. So, um, that should certainly reduce our, our call volume. Um, we are looking at, uh, in the future, and this isn't something that we can do immediately, is utilizing a service where, um, once the call goes through emergency medical dispatch in the dispatch center, the lower acuity calls could be screened additionally by, um, either a nurse or a paramedic to determine whether that patient could either go in by POV or, you know, go to an urgent care or whether a transport unit actually needs to go out and see them. So reduction of call volume is certainly one of the targets that, that we're shooting for there.
Sean, you mentioned a, a fire truck going, said, don't the fire districts have the necessary equipment set up in their Suburbans to be able to do that? Why would they send a fire truck instead of a Suburban?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, the, the Suburbans are really, the only Suburbans they use right now are just the battalion chiefs.
And there's not enough?
Right, there's only, yeah. Meridian has one battalion chief, Eagle has one, and then Boise has three. But they're really meant to manage the complex incident when it comes in. And so they do typically use just an engine because that's what they have in their stick.
The only reason I'm getting at is then the, then the fire districts come back and say, look, we had, you know, fifteen hundred calls, you know, and if a thousand of those could have been done with a Suburban equipped, Suburban versus a four million dollar fire, two million dollar fire truck. Those are the things that I'm hoping that in their strategic planning retreats that you guys are looking at.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, I, I agree. And I, I think those are some of the things that we're going to come out of that exercise with, um, some different ways of doing what we do today, yeah.
Okay.
How's yours, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How's your staff, um, holding up with COVID and seeing a spike in absences and?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, we do have five people out on either quarantine or isolation right now, which we haven't. This week was the first week we've had that since, I think, the end of June. We had a couple of people go out. Um, so we're certainly see a rise. Um, you know, just staffing-wise, we have a number of people out injured, um, on, uh, Um, you know, just staffing wise, we have a number of people out injured, um, on, uh, you know, a variety of different reasons that they're off on sick and then just normal vacation, um, has definitely created some staffing issues for us and, um, you know, I know that, that my people are, are tired, they're, uh, you know, they've done a lot of work and we're busier than we've ever been, so all that combined.
So that's, it's just gonna get worse going into winter and so how are you staffing up, how are you getting your bench a little deeper? What does that look like and how can we help?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, first of all, is maintaining our, our staff at full strength, so, uh, we just, uh, put out offers to twelve employees yesterday. That staffs the CUNA ambulance and it, it corrects three vacancies. We're also bringing, uh, a number of reserves into our reserve program and after they clear that internship or their training during that, um, we'll probably be offering some tent part-time work to some of those folks just to be able to, to balance that staffing load. We're also looking at the, the addition of maybe some basic life support ambulances that could go out and handle some of the lower acuity stuff um, during the, mostly the daytime hours, so, to take some of the load off of the rest of the units that are out there, so we're exploring all those options just to, to, you know, address the staffing issue and, and take some of the stress off the system.
Is the, um, the rise in this, uh, COVID, it, it was reported that it was about ninety percent unvaccinated, is that holding up, is that about the? Is that what, is that what you're seeing?
Mr. Chair, um, Commissioners, that, that is true. Um, you know, the, the unvaccinated folk, folks are, are certainly the ones that are getting sick. Um, we are seeing a number of what they call a breakthrough infection, uh, where somebody is vaccinated, has the virus and can pass it to other people, um, but.
Asymptomatic?
Either asymptomatic or very mild symptoms, um, mild to moderate, but, uh, very few of those patients are requiring any kind of hospitalization.
I'm wondering also, because there's no, we don't have any reports on that, that we're getting literally millions of people coming across the southern border, that, that there's no testing or there's no, uh, um, the McGalp, uh, there was a city in Texas tested a bunch and they found eighty percent of them had, had, uh, eighty, ninety percent of them had, had COVID and we don't know where those people are going because they're, because the, the government, the federal government is just distributing all throughout the United States. Are you seeing very many of those in Ada County?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe so. Um, I think most of the cases that we're seeing here are just normal transmission from people just going out and, you know, living their lives. Um, you know, that's, uh, you know, you see me wearing a mask and I've asked my, my field staff to go back to wearing masks because if they're doing that even in the stations, if they do have an asymptomatic case of COVID, they aren't exposing their partner and that I don't want to end up putting that other person on quarantine to keep my staffing, um, levels up.
That's why we're one in here with the crowd in here for the same reason, it's trying to get to see and I think we all should start doing that until we can get these numbers down.
Is your, uh, your employees, you see, you had a couple of test positive, were they also vaccinated?
One was, one was not.
Okay. Well, I don't think else is, is.
Anything you need from us?
No, I, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, I appreciate, uh, the, the thought about opening the budget because, uh, you know, as, as we go into this, if we, if the trend continues and, and, uh, they were saying we could see forty thousand new cases a week in October, if that's really the case, then, um, we may need to do something.
We may not need to open the budget if we can allocate some of our ARPA funds towards this, we probably can, and so that would be probably the easier, cleaner way to do it, so we'll just need, you know, you to come up with the justification for the staffing amount, all right?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. No, uh, major accidents at the fair?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, not that I'm aware of, you know, we, uh, I work down there both Friday nights, last Friday night was really, really busy. There were a lot of people down there. Um, nothing major that night, uh, um, you know, towards the end of the night, you always get a few people that have had a little too much to drink and we end up taking care of them and trying to get them either a ride home. Unfortunately, a few of them did, they were drunk enough, they had to go to the hospital, but, um, not, I, I hadn't heard of any major incident down there, so.
It's kind of incredible, isn't it, when you got that many people?
That many people, yeah.
It would be incredible that it doesn't turn out to be a super spreader event, those concerts. People got in there and they had no idea, they didn't have masks, couldn't socially distance, didn't know that there weren't limits on the amount of people in that space. I think we're gonna have a lot of backlash on that, frankly.
There were a lot of people down there that, um, that, uh, first Friday night, you know, was pretty calm, but there wasn't a concert. But that last Friday after Cedar got out, boy, everybody was, uh, coming down the midway and there were a lot of people.
Oh, they all had, uh, they have different crowds, actually.
Yeah.
I went to Chicago, a lot of bunches there. Anyway, all right, any other questions for our director?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, all right? Thank you.
Have a good rest, you guys.
We'll be, uh, we'll be in recess.